I'm going to call this special city council meeting combined with the Edmund Public School Board to order. And because the school board, when they meet, they call roll, we're going to let them go ahead and do their thing. So I'm going to let the Vice President of the School Board, Jamie Underwood, call roll for them.
Okay. Well, we'll have our court clerk, Judy, will you please call roll?
All good. Benson?
Here.
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 Here. Thank you, Judy.
All right. Here we go. Item number two, welcome and introductions by the Mayor, City Council members, Superintendent Delish, and School Board members. So gee, welcome, everybody. I guess I'll start this. I want to thank you all, the School Board, for agreeing to do this with us. I think this is something that we need to do regularly. We talked, Dr. Delish and I talked the other day and talked about quarterly, we'll figure out how that works, if it's quarterly, or maybe three times a year, whatever. But I think it's important that we create the partnership between the school district and the city, and that we really and truly embrace that partnership because so many people moved to Edmund because of the schools. And so many people moved to Edmund because of the amenities that we have, and we've got to make it work. We've got to figure out what that vision moving forward is. So by way of welcome, I just say thank you, I'm excited about it. Every one of you knows me already, so I don't have to introduce myself. And I think most of the people from the city side, they've gotten to know me over the last couple of months. But I'm just going to kind of walk down the row here and let each council member say who they are and what they represent. And if you've got anything else you want to add, go for it. Maggie?
Freedom to add. My name is Maggie Murdock Nichols. I represent Ward One, which we are in right now. And I, just because this is of note to right now, I'm an EPS parent, proud parent of kids who go to Edmund Public Schools. I'm a graduate of Edmund Public Schools, so is my mother. So we really appreciate your willingness to serve on this school board, and excited to hear how we can collaborate and support each other, that as the mayor said, our schools are such a key part of our community, and we really, it makes me glad that I, we have this choice to send our kids to this wonderful public school system. So, thank you for being here.
Dr. Ms. Underwood, welcome to your, and Board members, welcome to your new city hall. It's a beautiful place, lots of hard work. City staff has worked night and day to get it up and running, and it's a great place. So welcome, and thank you all for being here. My name's Barry Boer, and I'm Ward Two. Thanks.
Supposed to talk into that. Preston Waterston, I'm the Ward Three guy. We were talking before, like, our wards don't align, so we might have to translate a little bit, ward about, so I'm on the south end, he's on the east side, she's kind of in the middle, he's up in the north. So that's kind of how our wards align, if you don't know the map that well. But I'm a new council member in the south part of town, and excited to be here, excited to have a great relationship with the schools, for sure.
My name's Phil Frame. Dr. Delish, welcome to Edmund.
Thank you.
I think we talked just a little bit, all of you, Jamie, know you, Marcus, before to getting to know you, represent Ward Four here in Edmund. Like Maggie, I'm also graduate Edmund Public Schools, as were my parents, as was my aunt, as was their parents. So I think it's a lot of heritage, a lot of pride in that, and what our schools have always been in Edmund, and they continue to be. So thanks for your efforts.
Now, before I turn it over to you, Dr. Delish, I forgot to add, and I'm sure that most of the School Board members would slap me on the wrist afterwards, but I forgot to add that both of my daughters attended Edmund Public Schools, and that my older daughter is now employed by the Edmund Public Schools. So I want to get that in there, just in case anybody wants to get mad at me later. All right.
Well, I'll let my board members, wonderful board members, kind of introduce themselves, and then I'll kind of just kind of give you all a quick landscape of kind of what's going on, the horizon, and Edmund Public Schools. So over to my wonderful Vice President.
Okay, I'm Jamie Underwood. I'm District Three representative, which kind of aligns with Maggie's area, your Ward One. So I have four children who graduated from Edmund Public Schools, and now have seven grandchildren, four of which will soon be going into Edmund Schools. So appreciate the opportunity to visit with you all.
I'm Leanne Coleman, and I'm a former teacher. I represent District One. I have Nash children in my classes. And I appreciate you all having us here, and I look forward to how we can work together to continue to make this community the wonderful place it is to live, and draw more people in.
My name is Marcus Jones. I represent District Five, which aligns mainly with Ward Four, which is Phil Frame's. Ward, I have two kids that attend Edmund Public Schools. Me, my wife, and my kids really enjoy living in the city of Edmund. We enjoy going to all the different festivities that are put on through Edmund, and Edmund is just a great town to live in, on top of having great schools. And so I'm looking forward to us continuing the great partnership that we've had in the past, and that we can just continue on in the future with, because Edmund is great because of our schools, and because we have a great place to live with our city.
I'm Cynthia Benson. I'm District Four. I've been on the board for about 11 and a half years, and ditto, everything they said.
I was hoping you all would forget, but yeah, I guess I gotta speak now. Josh Delish, I'm really excited as a Superintendent of Schools here at Edmund Public Schools. I think one thing right away, I just want to thank my wonderful board, their unrelenting support throughout a unique transition that I had moving out of state and coming here. I can't tell you enough how grateful I am, and thank you for this opportunity, for you all in the city of Edmund, and just looking out, seeing all these faces that I recognize, and I'm getting to know more and more. It is really exciting to know great schools have great communities, and great communities have great schools, and to be able to come together in a collective impact like we're doing, and what we want to continue envision doing, is really powerful for our future. So that is really, really exciting. Just real quick, next week, we are having to kick off our big convocation. I would invite you all, but literally, we probably won't have a whole lot of space just because of how many people attend our convocation, our staff. We are welcoming everybody back. It's going to be really exciting. Friday, 8:30 over at Santa Fe High School. So if you see a lot of traffic city, I'm telling you now, you can blame me, but it is really going to be an exciting opportunity. And then the big one, August 14th, we are bringing everybody back, our students really excited. We have lots on the horizon for our students, from just looking at instruction, to achievement, to student experience, to, you know, how do we continue our partnerships with the city and with you all, to really give wraparound service to all of our students and our families in this community. And then last but not least, I have to thank all of my staff that worked so hard to get us to where we are today. They've been so supportive in working with me as a new person, so I'm very appreciative to you all, eighteen members and others out there, just thank you. So we are, I'm very excited about this partnership and continued collaboration with you all. I think there's continued excellence that we have on the horizon together. It's really, really exciting.
I too. All right, thank you. Item three is discussion of city of Edmund and Edmund Public Schools' funding options, including possible elections. How are we going to kick this off, Mr. City Manager?
Well, you know, we, thank you all for coming, first and foremost. I'm Randy NC, interim City Manager. Just real quick, you know, the city is mainly funded through sales tax. We have two temporary sales tax that will be rolling off in '27. So end of '25 and the year '26, we are going to be trying at some point in there to renew both those. One is one cent for our general fund, which is operations, police, fire, staff, things of that nature. And then it was a half cent for CIP, which is projects. So we will be looking to do that in that future. Always kind of want to know what your schedule's like for anything you have on the calendar as far as elections, but have to answer any questions, or find people who can answer them if I can.
Any questions?
Don't bet your bond.
Yeah. I know, as you probably all know, we are getting ready and ramping up, planning through our bond, that's going to be coming out. So we are in, you know, on the stages of getting it all aligned and organized, working with Zach, who's been a tremendous support to our school in the years. And really looking at and identifying, obviously, what are the priorities and the needs of our facilities, and our educational plan moving forward with our system. So we will, as we progress, continue to provide updates, you know, obviously through our board, but also through collaboration with you all, too, on where things start landing with us, because it is very exciting when you look at the tradition and the history of bonds for Edmund Public Schools, just the unrelenting support that families and you all have for the school. So we are very excited about getting that out. We know that there's obviously work that needs to be done, and making sure that people have a good understanding of what the bond and what does it mean. But I think as we're continuing this collaboration, more and more information will come.
You got dates, possible dates? When does it look like you're?
Do you not have that right now?
It'd be February of '26.
February of '26.
And then February 28th, and then February of '30.
Every other year.
That hits us.
And at that time, we'd also have a rotating schedule of School Board elections.
Yeah, we've got, we've got an election in two years, which will be Wards One and Two, and Mayor. Oh yes, always Mayor. Always Mayor, the wonderful two-year Mayor term. So that will be coming up, two years, it'll be primary, if there is primary, be in February of '27, and then general election in April of '27. Any other thoughts, comments from anyone?
When are you thinking about doing it, and you haven't had any dates in mind yet?
You know, there's a limited number in '26 now, with the new state legislation, so we only have five days to choose from. And we also want to, we always hope that it's going to be successful, but you always want to give yourself an out if it's not, so that you have time to run it again. The CIP is projects, so while critical to the city and the city at large, that one we could set aside for a while if we had to, and we could just suspend projects, live off our other CIP tax that we have. The more important one is the general fund, one cent. That's what keeps police cars rolling, and you know, the fire trucks showing up when you dial nine one one. So could be, we haven't decided yet, so. Early enough, though, that if, you know, worst-case scenario, we can do it.
There's some thoughts, how fast can we do it? And there's some thoughts, how slow can we do this? We'll figure it out.
Try to de-conflict with yours, though.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, absolutely. We do not want.
Hopefully be successful.
I don't think we want our sales tax at the same time as your bond issues.
We appreciate that more than you know.
That so complicates, well, it complicates everybody when that happens.
People get confused, lots of different explaining you have to do.
Yeah, yeah. All right, anything else? Then why don't we move on to item four, discussion of school safety measures, including traffic and emergency services.
I mean, I guess the biggest part of this conversation is, we have a lot of partnerships with the school district. A, we want to make sure that, you know, you feel like they're working for you, and things of that nature, that there are people here from the police department, and the fire department, and people from traffic management, I think somewhere back. So that anything's, any issues you foresee in the near, in the next year, or anything like that you want to discuss now, this is the opportunity for us to kind of start that conversation.
Yeah, I think, before I get into that, there's two people that I want to just kind of come up and speak to you all, just about the one piece, which obviously is school safety. You know, I'm more than proud, how do we make sure that all of our students are safe, and our staff are safe, and our families? And I just want to spend some time for you all, just kind of hearing from Mike Johnston, and also Debrion Davis, who is our Executive Director over Secondary. I can't take any credit, because I was not in the state, but they have been working relentlessly on how do you expand some of SRO support for our schools, and then also the work that's happening safety-wise in our schools. And I just want to be able to give them an opportunity, just to kind of talk about what we've done with some of the glossing passes, the SRO work, because I just don't feel it's my place to even take credit. They are remarkable at what they do, and I'm very grateful we are to have them in our schools.
So we actually got a safety training this morning, where I trained all of our admins, so we had every principal APs were there, counselors were there, we had front office staff there, getting on the same page, make sure all of our buildings are consistently being secured the same way. We cover the new bus system. It's a way for parents to be able to track the bus, be able to track their students. It's a way for us to be able to track our students if we need to. They'll actually scan onto the bus, and they'll scan off the bus. And so, once they scan on that bus, the bus shows them it's on. As soon as they get their stop, if it's not their stop, they try to scan off, it'll alert, say, hey, this isn't your stop. They go to their stop, they scan off, it's green, they get off the bus. If they missed their stop, another thing I learned today is if they missed their stop, it'll alert the bus driver that, hey, this kid was supposed to get off. Getting off this bus stop, they can make sure he gets off the right stop. We went into physical security of our buildings. We went into behavioral threat assessment of our process. We went in, we covered school violence, we covered everything that we are experiencing as a school, to make sure that, one, we're getting one message out there to all of our staff and all of our admins, but also to use the experiences that each of us is having in our schools to better the other schools, and make sure that every school is different. And so we make sure that we're, what this school is experiencing is being rolled to the other schools.
Yes. We have an amazing partnership with the Edmund Police Department, as you guys know, getting SROs in all of our secondary schools. We are expanding that partnership to have 12 SROs throughout this coming school year, so that all of our secondary schools have one dedicated SRO at each school. And right now, we have one that splits two of our schools. We do have six schools that are outside of Edmund City limits, and so those schools are served by a county sheriff, with our partnership with the county sheriff's office. But really thankful for the partnership that we have with both the city and the police department, to make sure that our schools are safe. We also know that the day officers will stop in at our elementary schools. We don't have SROs at our elementary schools, but as part of their day shift responsibilities that they stop in at our elementary schools as well. Randy, I know you mentioned traffic, and so if I had an ask, it would be for a heads-up, if we know that there are big traffic projects and construction projects happening, that even if it's not right next to the school, it does impact our flow of traffic specifically in the morning and in the afternoon. All of you have tried to get around town once school starts, and we know that, starting August 14th, the flow of traffic is going to drastically change within the city with all of our kiddos coming back to school. And so it's nice for us to have a heads-up, if we know that there's going to be a significant lane closure on a road around a school, because that impacts our ability to get our kids on and off campus quickly. Also, for the schools' old lights, I know in previous years, we've turned those on prior to school starting, like the week of that August 11th week, to give drivers a reminder that they need to start slowing down in those areas. So turning those lights on prior to the first day of school is also very helpful to us, just so that the community slows down. Any questions for us?
I've actually got a question for Randy and our staff, in regards to lane closures.
Yes.
Where are we going to be with the waterline project on 33rd in front of the elementary school that first week of?
My understanding is we'll be out from, we'll be out of the way of the elementary school, we'll still be on 33rd in parts, but for the most part.
At least be out of the way in front of it.
Look for confirmation from the back.
I saw a thumbs up, we're good.
Another thing with traffic, I know that beginning of school year, especially the first couple of days, there's a lot of traffic, a lot of parents want to take their kids on the first day of school, they want to get the pictures and all that. And we hear the concerns, and I know those, over the course of the first couple of weeks, those traffic concerns lessen. But if you have any concerns, please reach out to us, and we'll sort address them as quick as we can.
Are they already, I have a question for the city, are they already making significant plans for our new elementary and middle school out east? I mean, that traffic is going to be significant.
We have no funding identified for projects out there at this time.
Can you get some?
Are the drop-offs?
Of course we don't.
For the new schools, the drop-off on, is it on Air Depot or Covell?
It is built, it is within the campus.
It's coming off of.
It's Air Depot, but they're also.
At the primary, Air Depot?
Yes. But the drop-off location.
Once the project is complete, I think the entrance would come off of Covell. There'll be a road that runs up along the east side of that property, so they would be able to come in on Covell, drop off at the school, and exit off of.
They'd be able to stack on the property, once they get off of Covell.
Yeah, once both schools are completed, there'll be a road that runs on the east side of our property line, along that property line, that'll kind of feed those schools. And so we'll bring off Covell. We engineered, they engineered it to make sure we could stack those cars for the pickup lines that we experience.
So there's no entrance off of Air Depot?
No, zero.
Yeah, just for the procedures of the arrival and dismissal, we're going to have them off Covell, because of the space we have for the cars.
To stack the cars.
And get them off the roads, you know, onto our property.
Yeah.
We'll have entrances off Air Depot.
We'll also have a bus barn out there.
Yes.
Sounds like a great joint project for the schools at the city to fix that road.
I think we have a city engineer right there.
Good afternoon, Steve Lawrence, I'm the Director of Engineering. I had two problem boys that I turned over to Edmund Public Schools, and they really turned them around and became National merit scholars. So, you know, thank you to the long-term people that have been on the board, so. So at the intersection, it's always, the first week of school is the worst week of school to have any traffic-related issues, so we always try to get things done in the summertime if we can, otherwise, not the first week of school. We've got a project right now where Saints Boulevard is closed. We're doing everything we can to get that open, at least one lane to traffic, to be able to get buses and everything else through there. We will have, in the near future, we'll have Danforth and Kelly, that project has been, you know, in planning for 10 years, finally just turned it over to ODOT. So later on this year, we'll let everybody know about when construction will start happening with that. So, and particularly with the intersection of Air Depot and Covell, you know, we've looked at that, we've interacted with Edmund Public School staff, and they're talking about, you know, budget shortfalls, and not able to do any improvements on the roads out there. So what we're looking at, as far as engineering staff at the city, is we're looking at any type of interim improvements we can make, and what can we do to make the traffic a little bit better there. So we're in the process right now of installing some temporary interim signals at Danforth and Sooner Road, as well as Danforth and School Road, which is a little bit west of that. We got really good bids on that, so we're looking at possibly doing the same thing at Air Depot and Covell, as far as like a temporary, kind of one of those span wire signals that are fairly efficient to put in. There's a church on that northwest corner that is designed, and they have some widening improvements in place. We're unsure of timing of that, but we're trying to work with kind of all the different parties to get there. I think, I think we may try to, our goal, and what we talked to with Edmund Public School staff, was that as a city, we're going to try to find funding for at least a signal, which will make it better. It won't, it won't be a full-blown improvement where it's widened and beautiful like the other side of I-35, but it will at least make traffic a little bit more manageable. Seeing that, and try to have that in place before August of 2026, before the school opens.
When you say signal, are you talking about slowdown to 25, or are you talking about an intersection signal?
Intersection signal, just right at the intersection of Air Depot and Covell, just a typical traffic signal, yeah.
Yeah, Steve, quick, talk about it in technical terms, a stoplight.
Yes. Yes.
It's a signal, but you all call it a stoplight.
Even if it was a stoplight, it would really just always be red, right?
Will you also be putting a signal to make people slow down to 25?
So I think that's part of, anytime, I don't know, that's something we'll have to look at with the schools on study, to see, there's certain requirements for that to be met, as far as looking at number of pedestrians, that kind of thing. But if, if it meets the school zone warrants for that, then we would need the yellow flashing lights, because it's a, those are streets that are more than 30 miles an hour, and so that's when you need to go with yellow flashing lights, school zones, instead of just regular signs that say school zone.
So the timeline for those new schools to open is August of next year?
For the elementary.
For the elementary, yeah.
Elementary. And then middle school when?
Two years.
Two years.
After that.
You know, the one I think's interesting, I don't know if there's any outside-the-box thinking, but we don't have to look far. I don't know what the incident reports are, Corzine, you're back there, but I have no idea how we've been fortunate enough to avoid a whole lot when we stack on Boulevard here at Russell Thordy. I mean, it's, it's like a, an insurance guy's nightmare of exposure waiting to happen. And I don't know if there's anything we can do, drop off at the back instead of the front or something, but I mean, a street as busy as Boulevard, I cannot imagine how we're avoiding major mishaps of kids getting in and out of cars, and cars running into the back of each other, so.
It's the, it's the same on 33rd Street.
Oh, it's terrible on 33rd.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a higher miles.
And nine. And just, you just might as well just say every, where every, especially where every grade school is. Except for.
So the funding that you're talking about on this next sales tax issue, none of that is being earmarked for these road improvements around the school, at this time?
None of that money's been programmed at all yet, but I would have a feeling projects like this would rise to the top of this because of the nature of.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other conversation we need on that topic? Let's move on to number five, discussion of existing and future opportunities for collaboration between the city of Edmund, Edmund Public Schools, and community partners. And I think we already started that conversation, just talking about some of these road improvement projects. So, I mean, I will, I look at this particular topic as, what are the things we need to be discussing? What are the things that our two organizations need to start talking about now, and how do we get there? I mean, whatever they are, whatever concerns you all have, whatever concerns we have, I think this is the time to look at those opportunities and say, how do we get there?
One thing I'll bring up is the, our partnership with the pool. I think that there's some major, I understand there's going to be some major expenses that are going to be happening from that, and that have already happened. And then, of course, the agreement that we had, I know we just approved the agreement two months ago. And so I know that we're looking at the expenses differently, and if we're having any issues, I'm not sure if there's any issues with that or not, but I would love to hear you guys' take on our partnership with it, and if you guys have any concerns with it.
I think we're going to have to look at the old guard on our council, say we're all new, so seems fine to us. Councilman Moore, have you got any thoughts on this particular topic? Yes, and I look forward to visiting with Mr. Jones at some other date to go over that.
Fair. We can get together.
I mean, you literally threw a loaded question out there, and there's four of us on this council that. I think there's ongoing conversations with the city attorney's office, and the city manager, and the administration to get that worked out, so.
Well, then, I like.
and the administration to get that worked out. So it's, it's worked on it. It'll get tidied up and everybody will be happy.
Let's get that tidied up and make sure that we're all happy with it. That's what, that's what I want to hear.
I mean, one of the, one of the things that, and Marcus, we've talked about it, we talked about it earlier this week, is, you know, we're, we're sitting here today, you guys have broken ground. You're going to have a new grade school opening essentially a year from now. And we're talking about the street issue.
Yeah.
And the school district has purchased land farther out east where the new high school will be someday now. We need to be talking about that issue now, not waiting until your all's design work is done and we're breaking ground. So as we move forward, we need to be talking about those kinds of issues because they impact all of us. And we've got to be thinking that far ahead. And, you know. That includes funding. Yeah, absolutely it does. Yes. Got to figure it out later. Yeah.
I think from a, you know, from the district standpoint too, is, you know, the city and, you know, the capital improvement projects or large housing developments or corporations or those that we may not necessarily even be aware of, but being able to know like here might be on the horizon and what does that do for our, our schools and being more predictive of, of how do we respond to the growth? Because I think naturally as this partnership continues to grow and, and this becomes even more of a, the gem that it is, we're going to have more and more people wanting to get into Edmund, which is awesome. But it also poses the, how do we navigate the growth and do it really effectively well and with really clear collaboration and communication? I think that's where, you know, from the school standpoint, would be beneficial to kind of say, here's where we're hearing what we're going to move. And we've talked about that with the two of you all, which has been super exciting.
And the tennis center has been a success. It's, it appears to be drawing people into the city and for tournaments and things that will help the city as well as promote our educational system.
Going back to what you said, Josh, Marcus and I have talked about this once, but having the ability when something new is coming in like that, to do kind of a what-if analysis on school crowding is I think something that could probably benefit both of us. Cause a lot of times that's a concern, obviously if people, if there's a neighborhood or something going in. So if we were able to say, we, we looked at it and there's 80% capacity in this school, right? Then everybody's probably like, okay. But if it's like 180%, then we're probably concerned, right? We need to work something out. So I think that is something that we could work to quantify together when those things happen. Just so you have a heads up, but also so we can make sure we're, you know, not sort of hurting each other with decisions we're making.
And it, it's also wise to know on some of these developments, how long they're going to take to finish out. Because the, the general public's reaction is, oh, here's a new neighborhood that's been approved. We're going to have 200, 300 homes. Well, that may be a four-phase project that'll take 15 to 20 years. For you all to plan appropriately, you need to really be plugged in on more than just, oh, there's going to be 200 homes over here, right? So yeah, we've, we've got to figure out how we combine our resources to, to do a better job. And I think we have historically as a city, we have provided agendas at least to the district about what's coming up before planning, commissioning, city council, so that you see it. But sometimes in those packets, it doesn't even give you enough information.
Is that the right way to do it? Like, how's that happening? Is there a staff connection that's happening?
I would think that's.
To share that information?
I get, I do get the packet, but I don't get a timeline. So as a district, we started demographic survey this year. They'll be out 10 years out. So they'll probably be reaching out, get a lot of that information, kind of to help us plan, kind of where the growth is in the city and then kind of how to place students and build schools, kind of even them out. Like you said, it's a, I think, off-site involvement. So that'll happen over the next, gosh, six to nine months.
Do you have a staff point of contact for getting that information?
You can contact me.
I mean, on the city side, do you have?
Not yet, but we've talked about just us being as leadership.
Small group.
A little service.
We've got more detailed conversation.
I was just going to add that, you know, a lot of times timelines change. And so we may have something come before us that creates a sense of, oh no, you know, but sometimes it's incremental development we're seeing or the nature of the business is things take longer than expected. So I, I definitely support being in communication with the schools and, and giving you a heads up when we can. What, what is enrollment looking like right now?
We're staying steady from around the 26,000, give or take, 26,000 students, you know, and, you know, are continually, you know, building out, you know, to be the district where we want to continue to grow with enrollment.
I do have to say, I, I've always been blown away. I remember every year superintendent towns would appear before the EEDA and provide planned from busing to new schools. The, I have no idea where, where, if you're short on information, where you're getting what you've got, but it was far away better than anyplace else. So maybe, maybe you can give input to the city because I think your information is better demographically than what we have. But I mean, it was far planned out, busing, how many additions are going in between this mile section and so forth. So I, I think we can do better to help you, but I don't see much shortage in that area from what you guys have in terms of knowledge of that because you do really well with it.
I think he always got it from you.
Our schools are, are packed. I mean, every year we need to build a new school. And it's difficult for our constituents to understand how the classes are so full that we can't transfer students from one school to another. If we had open needs, we'd be happy to do that, but we don't. And I look at Santa Fe, which is so far to the west, we have no place to go with another high school out there. So what we do is we keep building on to that school to accommodate those students. If, when it comes to redistricting, we can't expect people that were at Santa Fe in that particular area to drive past North and Memorial to all the way out to the east. So, I mean, we're going to have some real challenges as far as communication with, with our neighborhoods. It's going to be difficult.
Doctor, I, I would like to follow up on funding for roads and, and how we go about that in the future. So get started with school, if you would. Get things, get the bells ringing and the kids in the classrooms. And when you find time, let's get together and talk
Well, and I'd love, I'd, going back to the swimming pool, I know, apparently Marcus wants to talk about, I'd love to hear ideas.
Doctor, I was at a meeting the other morning and you mentioned there's 107 languages in the Edmund schools, I believe. And I know this isn't on the agenda, so I hope we don't get in trouble. But before we button up, could you highlight on that? We can figure out how to roll that into five because it's a discussion for collaboration, how are we going to handle all those languages as a city? Yeah. I'd like to hear about that. She's rolling her eyes at me.
I mean, it just gives a great, pictures of, you know, a beautiful picture of the diversity that we offer in our schools. And, you know, just the amount of different languages that, you know, students are being exposed to. You know, I have two that'll be joining the system and being able to, to be a part of that diversity of language is just a beautiful thing. So, you know, I think, you know, as, as we continue the, the partnership and the growth and the people are going to chatter about the excellence, we're probably going to be adding more languages, which is really exciting for, for this area and for the state overall.
And it's really changing. And when I came on the board 11 and a half years ago, that number was like 63. So does that tell you how, what we have really changed in a little over a decade? Languages I've never heard of.
Right. This brings to mind, we are seeing a, a desire for citizens to want to, to traverse the city in different ways. We are seeing more people on bike, more people walking. I think people are finding that that brings them joy, but it's also good for us to, to walk. So, and especially those kids, those, those schools that are in neighborhoods, you know, there are a lot of kids who either walk by choice or walk because mom and dad aren't home to take them and they're, and you know, the buses don't go right around in a neighborhood school. So, I think I'm just bringing that up to remind our community that there are children and their families who are choosing to get to school by foot or on bike and just to, you know, be careful. And I, I live in, near one of those neighborhood schools. And when school starts, I think people start to realize, oh, I can't go down that street anymore at the speed I was before, because now there's, there's cars, children or there's police officers there. So, you know, I think it's just a good reminder for all of us as school starts to slow down because it's not, it's not worth a terrible accident to get where you're going. So.
All right. Any other collaborative efforts anyone would like to throw out there? Well, seeing that, I think this has been a, a good opportunity for the two organizations to get together. And like I said, when I opened this up, I, I hope that we do this on a regular basis. So that whether it's as a whole or in pieces and parts, so that we can stay on top of this and move this forward correctly. I guess with that.
I'm going to take you on a tour.
We'll take, we'll take all of you on a tour. So you can see what's going on.
Do we have to?
I need a, I need a motion to adjourn.
But if more than three of us are going, do we have to wait to do that?
We'll split into smaller groups so we don't have a quorum for you all or for us. We can do that. But yeah, we're going to have to adjourn two meetings. This is going to be really interesting. Would you all like to join, adjourn your meeting first?
Thank you. Thank you. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Your turn.
All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So move, sir. And a second. All in favor, I'll just take a voice vote. We're adjourned.